Okay, you may begin.
Awesome. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for coming to the City Council Candidate Forum on Climate Change Issues. So I'll be your moderator, and then Carolyn Obron will be the technology person, and then Mark Hyam and Emily Lesner will be asking questions off and on. And so we have four out of the six candidates running for office, two from Ward Two, and then also two from Ward Six. And so there we have Bill Whitekemper, Andrea Weiner, Betsy Peters, and Philip Merriman. And so the city council election is coming up on, I'm sorry, and Bill Whitekemper and Andrea Weiner are with Ward Two, and Betsy Peters and Philip Merriman are with Ward Six. And so the city council election is coming up on Tuesday, April 6th, and the deadline to register to vote is Wednesday, March 10th. You'll be able to vote for one city council candidate in both the second and sixth boards. And so I want to thank our co-sponsors as well, and I also want to reiterate that some of these organizations are 501(c)(3) nonprofits, and so they do not endorse candidates, but we just educate folks on the issues such as climate change. And so those co-sponsors are the Sunrise Movement of Columbia, Citizens Climate Lobby Columbia and Jefferson City, Min Missouri Peace Works, Renew Missouri, Como Transit Justice, and Sierra Club Osage Group. And so each candidate will be answering questions which they've gotten in advance to prepare, and I'll be timing each candidate. So if you see me holding up these time cards, that is what's going on. And then we'll start in alphabetical order, and the person who went first will rotate to the last on the next question in a round robin fashion. So, for example, Philip will go first on the first question, and then last on the next question. So we can go ahead and get started.
All right, I have your first question. It's a two-minute question. Do you support adopting building codes that would require builders to make their new structures or rehab structures more energy efficient? And would you support a measure adopted by the City of St. Louis to require new building projects or rehab projects with off-street parking to include EV charging stations?
Right, and Philip, you will be going first. You're muted, Philip.
Sorry about that. The short answer would just be a simple no. There are more efficient ways to motivate our builders and our contractors to move in a greener direction than by mandate. We don't need to further impede production by producing more red tape for people getting their houses done. This adds an unnecessary amount of inflation, time, and cost to the production of homes, which is already a problem locally, and also allows for a stagnation in that market as a result. So what we need to do instead is provide incentives outside of this mandate. What we can do is offer rebates for people that have energy-efficient appliances, like we already do in some cases, and perhaps we can step those rebates up. We can also try and incentivize local technology companies to provide better care and services for Columbia residents, and even small businesses that want to go through the process of renovating their offices or their homes. As it stands right now, a lot of those companies here don't have the training and the personnel necessary to install some of the more modern, energy-efficient appliances. A specific example of this would be something like heated driveways and the kind of climate-controlled ventilation systems that are more modern. A lot of the companies locally don't have the personnel or the training to install those, so they have to outsource somewhere else. If we can leverage the teaching capabilities of our local community and the available school spaces we have to educate some of those people and provide training in those areas, we could cut this issue off at the head and wouldn't have to worry about passing additional legislation or, you know, adding more overhead to what is already a very cumbersome process for these contractors and builders.
All right, Betsy.
Well, I guess I have a different look. I would generally, I support building codes that improve energy efficiency. In the past, we have looked at this, and we have made some changes, but we have not endorsed them globally. And that has to do with talking to our builders. You know, the builders, the developers, the landlords, the people that are actually in the trenches, how are they able to use these codes? I do think it helps if we can incorporate them into new housing, into rehabbing rehabbed housing. But I don't think that we should just say it's a new building code if they say they're more energy efficient, and therefore we should just blanketly move towards them. But certainly, the more energy efficient we can be, the better. Certainly, just looking at what happened in the last couple of weeks in Texas makes us want to evaluate what we do up here. The same thing with the EV charging stations. I think that sounds like a good idea, but the devil's always in the details. And so we'd have to see what the barriers are to being actually able to do that, rather than just blanketly saying, yes, we're going to do it. But I think, you know, as always, we should just be looking at what we can do to be more energy efficient and try and support that as we can.
All right, Andrea, you're up next.
I would support codes that enhance energy efficiency. I believe that new homes and rehabbed structures should be built efficiently and should also maximize the cost effectiveness to reduce our carbon emissions and to help homes meet these energy standards. Regarding the measure in St. Louis, I believe that we should be using all a variety of different ways to make using electric vehicles more attractive to Columbia residents, and that includes making them easier to use by increasing the number of options that, you know, a resident may have to charge their electric vehicles, meaning charging stations also. But whatever we do, I think that we need to be taking impactful and accessible action to address climate change in our community.
Okay, and Bill.
Possibly. I would have to determine what the second ward quarters want. If you're rehabbing an older home, you should replace the air conditioner and the water heater. It was not like a heat pump, replacing windows and adding insulation in the ceiling are other things you should be doing. There are at least 10,000 dwelling units and businesses in Columbia that are using city electricity and city water, but do not have an electric meter or water meter. If you're rehabbing a unit that is not metered for electric and water service, the most important thing you can do is to install an electric meter and water meter. It is very difficult to conserve energy without a electric meter and water meter. Transportation contributes 16% to global emissions. Electric vehicle charging stations should be a corporate project between the property owner leasing, with the property owner leasing the city of the land and the city providing hardware and construction costs for the charging station. Takes an hour or more to fully charge an electric vehicle. Using electric vehicles to avoid carbon emissions works only if we are generating electricity from zero-carbon sources. Sale of electric vehicles should be 100% of car sales by 2036. Today, they're less than 2%. California will ban gas-powered cars in 2035. Car construction, city buses are rival options for electric vehicles. Batteries will never be light enough or powerful enough to move planes and ships any more than short distances. Alternative fuels are still very expensive. Must switch to nuclear power.
All right, Mike.
Excuse me, I just wanted to ask Bill, on your next response, could you talk just a little louder, please?
Right, I guess we're ready for question number two, and this is a two-minute question. In approaching the aggressive goal set by the City of Columbia to have zero emissions by 2035, what are your thoughts on allowing businesses or residences to produce their own solar or wind above and beyond what is currently allowed by Columbia Water and Light? Should the city encourage large-scale users to produce more of their own power, even if it means the city sells less power?
Betsy, you're up first.
I think I go first this time, yeah. I'm, I think that folks that can use their own solar or wind, I don't know of any problems. I'm sure I'm missing some about having them produce their own solar or wind, but I know in my neighborhood, we have a number of people who have solar power on their roof, and they're able to decrease their carbon footprint that way. And, you know, I think that's fine. I don't know of any problems with that. I know at the moment, we do limit that, and I'm not sure exactly why. And as far as encouraging large-scale users to produce more of their own power, I think that's fine. I don't think the city is going to have any problem with needing to supply less energy if the larger companies are able to provide their own. So an interesting question, as always.
All right, Andrea, you're up next.
The City of Columbia provides things at cost. We should not be, this shouldn't be about making money, but rather providing the residents of Columbia with reliable, energy-efficient options to reduce emissions. Clean energy should be accessible to every resident, not just commercial users or wealthier neighborhoods that can afford to make the investments that this type of infrastructure would require.
Okay, and Bill, you are up next.
Making, making electricity accounts for 27% of greenhouse gas emission. The city should not put a limit on the amount of energy a customer can produce, or that the city would purchase. The prices that he pays will control the amount of energy sold or bought. That zero is what we need to aim for by 2050. The most designed nuclear plant that would generate clean electricity with very little waste. Every country will need to change its ways. Virtually every activity in modern life involves leasing greenhouse gas. Clean energy sources like solar and hydro power should be used rather than dirty energy sources like fossil fuels, oil, gasoline, coal, methane, natural gas, and carbon dioxide. We need more money for clean energy research. Clean energy research has been sidetracked by politics. As far as the large-scale users using more of their own power, it means the city sells less power. I agree with that.
All right, and Philip.
I agree in part with Bill. I think that nuclear is the cleanest energy we have. I think that there's not a lot of debate about that. I think the scientific consensus on that is quite firm in terms of the amount of energy we can produce and the number of, you know, human beings we can provide energy with in their home units. I think that, you know, the goal to move to zero emissions is an ambitious goal, but not a realistic goal in the timeframe offered. I mean, we need to try and realize that the the cost inherent in doing that is going to be reflected locally. As Betsy Peters pointed out, we do have some restrictions on what you're currently allowed to provide for yourself in terms of electricity, and a lot of that is really poorly worded vague statements inside of our municipality that tell us what, how many kilowatt-hours you're allowed to put back onto the grid and how many you're reimbursed for. And among other things, a lot of this is the cost of electric bills. Anybody who's paid your bills before knows that a significant portion of the bill you pay is not your kilowatt-per-hour use, just like your water bill or anything else. You might use more gallons one month than the next, but the majority of your bill is access to the city features, the access to the grid, the cost to maintain that infrastructure. And the easiest way for us to incentivize this, the easiest way for us to provide an impetus for people to burden or shoulder the burden of upgrading expensive renovations to their homes is to say, we will allow you to fully remove yourself from those costs if you can sustain your own power. That would be a big incentive. People have very little incentive to provide their own power if they're still going to be paying for city power. There would have to be a significant subsidy there. And that's not something that can happen lightly. There's going to need to be some serious revisiting of the city codes for why that billing is the way it is. But, you know, with some time and care, we can effort in that direction.
All right, Emily, ask question three, please.
All right, this is a one-and-a-half-minute question. The Integrated Electric Resource and Master Plan Task Force has instructed Siemens to explore scenarios to achieve 100% clean renewable energy by 2030, 2040, and 2050. What information do you need and what criteria will you use to decide what scenario Columbia will adopt?
Andrea, you're up first.
So when I think about the Integrated Electric Resource and Master Plan Task Force, A, that's a mouthful to say. And, and B, when I think about the relationship that they're getting into and what they're looking for to obtain this, you know, 100% clean renewable energy in the next several decades, I think about a lot of things, actually. So is the plan equitable and just? Does what being, is what being presented to us, does it commit to achieving equity, affordability, and access for all members of the community, or just some? Does a plan like this create local jobs, jobs that are quality, family-supporting, and unionized jobs? Does it provide affordable, clean energy options to help communities with the greatest financial need? Are we leaving our low-income residents behind and creating a have and have-not when it comes to clean energy situations? And does the plan have clearly identified indicators to track the effectiveness? We don't want to get into something where we can't measure whether or not it's successful and how we can improve it.
Okay, Phil.
The world typically adds 51 million tons of greenhouse gases to the atmosphere every year. During 2020, global emissions dropped to around 5% because of COVID-19. Achieving 100% clean energy by 2030 or 2040 is not the fuel, which leads 2050, which is possible. The impact on humans will be catastrophic if we don't. Temperatures will keep going up, incoming energy use will go down and then end. We need to provide clean energy without releasing any more greenhouse gases. Impossible, we should use low-emission cement and steel. One fifth of the carbon dioxide emitted today is still, will still be in the atmosphere in 10,000 years. Carbon dioxide is the most common greenhouse gas. How the greenhouse gases cause warming, they absorb heat and trap it in the atmosphere. They work the same way a greenhouse works. When your car is sitting outside in the sun, the windshield lets sunlight in and then traps some of the energy inside the car. The temperature goes up. Every bit of carbon we put in the atmosphere adds to greenhouse effect. One more time, it will have a few benefits, but overall, there will be more negative effects.
Okay, and Philip.
I took a brief moment to look over the mouthful of the Integrated Electric Resource and Master Plan Task Force. And their wording is incredibly vague. It's incredibly buzzword-heavy designs to offer as little information as possible with as many industry buzzwords as possible so that they can be, you know, they can continue to gain all the funding they want for all the lofty promises they plan to make. I'm not sure that this is ever achievable. I mean, to be completely honest with you, 100% is a number that people really need to understand and practice is never going to be realized. That's an unrealistic goal, period. Especially in the timeframe that we've put forward here, this is simply not going to happen. One of the things that we need to realize is that, you know, especially in this particular industry where climate change has a lot of activism behind it right now. And a lot of that is motivated by goodwill, people who want to do what's important and right for the environment. And a lot of it is unfortunately motivated by completely fake pseudoscience that doesn't really bear out in the long term. And we make these really wild promises to each other that it's going to get better if we do X or Y, and it simply won't. We don't want to, we don't want to remove our community's trust in us to be reasonable by making promises we'll never commit to. So I think that we need to be much more careful about the language we put forward in trying to, you know, follow these plans. And we need to be very cautious about what we put forward in terms of who's writing these plans and what we're putting our name behind. The City of Columbia has very real issues, and I think that they're not served best or realized best by that particular plan.
And Betsy.
Well, I guess I have not seen the Siemens plan. I don't think it's back yet. You know, Mr. Merriman might be right. We might not be able to get to 100%, 100% clean renewable energy, but I think we need to certainly make that something that we strive for. We were talking in the Water and Light Advisory Commission the other day about, about how much clean energy we actually have available and how much of it is that we're paying for carbon offsets, which I knew nothing about when I started on city council. I think we need to be careful about making sure that we actually are looking at clean renewable energy and not just sort of a shell game of moving things around. You know, maybe we can't reach it, but I think we need to certainly look at it. We need to look at what we can do to improve the renewable energy that we use, what we can do to decrease our carbon footprint. And if we don't strive for it, we're not going to meet it. And that was one of the questions that came up. It's like, well, what happens if we don't meet this ordinance? Well, then we haven't met the ordinance, and then we need to look at what we can do and at least be aiming, you know, for the stars, even if we don't quite get there. So, you know, I think we just need to keep pushing forward and doing the best we can. All right, I guess we're up to question number four, and this is a long one. It's four minutes and 30 seconds that each candidate gets and deals with transportation. The Columbia City Council passed the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan in June 2019. Transportation currently contributes 27% of Columbia's greenhouse gas emissions. The cap recommends as a priority strategy to, and I'm quoting, build a thriving public transit system. This is a matter not only of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, but providing an equitable opportunity for everyone in the community to have access to jobs, education, and affordable housing, with transportation to move between home, school, and work. The topic of transit in Como touches upon many things from routes, hours, ridership costs, revenues, how children are transported to school, and more. We'd like to hear your thoughts on public transit, including what can be done to increase accessibility, sustainability, and ridership through increased use of buses. Please address the following transit-related items. A, during the pandemic, Columbia Transit will be free at least until September of 2021. Would you support continuation of free public transit? And B, what more broadly is your vision for Columbia Transit? Do you support Columbia achieving a thriving public transit system? If so, what approach do you believe the community should take to achieve one? And again, you have four minutes and 30 seconds.
Bill, you're up first.
Okay, I do support continuing free public transit for everybody. Also support achieving thriving public transit. Buses should be electric. The city should purchase smaller buses, develop shuttered roofs, and possibly have two transfer points. One at Wall Place for people going to work, and one on campus for people going to school. There should not be a charge for riding the bus.
All right, Philip.
I apologize. I took quite a few right along notes on this one. First, I'd like to start by listing a couple of city names. Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, Olaf, Kansas, Port St. Louis, Florida, Cape Coral, Florida, Arlington, Texas. These are just a handful of cities that are within the same range as Columbia, Missouri, in terms of population, between 110,000 at the low end, and actually quite a bit larger, being close to 400,000 at the higher end of that Arlington, Texas. These cities have no public transit system at all. They've moved into the 21st century, and they move beyond this. They have ride-share apps, programs that allow for people to have much more clean and efficient ways of moving around their city. It's one less element for our local government to mess up. It's one less thing we need to worry about, one less thing they collect our taxes to waste. There's an enormous benefit to this. Instead of having buses, whether electric or not, patrolling the streets, hoping for someone to hop on and ride, these ride-share app-style solutions only provide transit when that transit is needed. That is a dramatic reduction in CO2 emissions, which we all agree is not a great idea. We think this is a workable model that's been playing out in these cities for an extended period of time, and it's a growing trend. More and more cities are adopting this no-public-transit system because it's far better served by the private sector. Small companies have developed local ride-sharing apps, not just Lyft or Uber, or some of these other large companies that can have that footprint. But a lot of local small businesses, whether they're cab companies or busing companies, have risen to meet these needs. And again, they're able to do so on a much more granular level than our system can currently do. And instead of having huge amounts of, you know, vehicles, fleet vehicles, constantly pumping CO2 on our atmosphere, waiting to be used, we can address this on a person-by-person basis. When you live from A to B, that lift is generated from A to B with a dramatically reduced footprint and a dramatically reduced cost to every citizen of Columbia. Fewer taxes need to be collected to maintain a public transit system. That public transit system draws less power. There are fewer, there are so many more gains by moving to this model than there are in any other. So the short answer is, no, I don't support a thriving public transit system in Columbia. I want it to go away completely. I want that to be a privatized solution where we, as the people, can enjoy a lower tax burden and a better product because of it. And there are so many successful models, which I point to, just a few that I named at the beginning are already working, you know, in the benefit of all of their, of all of their community members. Regarding the free until September 21st, we're already, we're already there at that point. Would I continue it? No, I think that we need to be addressing this issue immediately. I think that at that point, we need to reevaluate the ridership burden, how many people are actually using our public transit system, and what we can do in the short term to help transition them towards a cleaner solution in the future. I don't believe this points us towards electric vehicles. We've had several questions leading up to this regarding, you know, EV stations at the city. I think electric vehicles are a completely toxic idea everywhere around. It's fun to imagine reduced CO2 emissions from gas vehicles, but it's also very easy to completely ignore the fact that the strip mining of lithium is far more devastating to our planet than any amount of CO2 emissions. Entire countries have been laid barren by this. We're salting the earth to take lithium out of it. Those lithium-ion batteries are non-recyclable. We've been promised a better battery for over a decade. It's not happened. We need to find a way that isn't a pipe dream. We need to find a way that's not going to be, you know, leveraging our future against the need to pretend like we're doing something now. I think if we can move away from these hybrid electric or electric vehicle buses to saying we're going to have smaller vehicles with a lighter footprint, patrolling less in your city to manage this, it's a win for everybody.
All right, Betsy.
Well, as always, I love to come to these and just listen to what people think because, you know, everybody has sort of a different approach to this. I'm fine with leaving the, the fee to have free city, free public transit because really, it pays for about 15% of the cost of the public transit. So I think in this COVID world where it disproportionately affects our lower-income citizens, that we should go ahead and continue this, this free public transit. I mean, that's the problem. I actually had two thoughts. One is, we either need, if we're going to really have a robust, thriving public transit system, then we are going to have to figure out some way to fund it, and that is going to require money. So you either have to increase taxes, you have to get everybody on board, which means the city, the student housing projects, you know, that are now using their own private buses, the university, perhaps some of our big employers. I mean, we need some way to actually fund this, and that's a problem. And then I have to agree with Mr. Merriman, just driving empty buses around town, waiting for people to get on them is a problem. I mean, and we've tried to address this before. It either needs to be a really robust system where there's a significant number of people using it, which means we can decrease the amount of cars that are actually on the road, and therefore the CO2, or we need to come up with a different plan. And it might be that we need to think outside the box. I'm not sure Arlington or Broken Bow are maybe the best ideas because I'm not sure how many low-income citizens they have and how they actually address that issue. Because it's not just the issue of Uber or someone able to pick them up, but how do they pay for that? Or who pays for that? But I do start to think that sometimes we maybe need to think a little further outside the box than just more buses because the real cost for the bus system isn't the size of the buses, because most of that's paid by the federal government. But the cost for the, for the bus drivers to be driving these buses around. So we might need to look at some kind of ride-share program or some kind of car-share program or something different. I don't have a good plan for it. We've been beating our heads against this for the six years I've been on city council, and we haven't come up with a plan. We keep struggling with it. I'm always happy to hear other people's opinions.
Andrea, you're up.
So for the question about whether or not
So for the question about whether or not I would support a continuation of free public transit, the Columbia Area Transportation Study Organization or CATSO, you may have heard the word CATSO thrown around at, at city meetings. They reported a record 2.6 million riders in 2018, and they're projecting a 5 million ridership by 2030. So as a way to incentivize the use of our public transit system, lessen budgetary burden on those who need it the most, and to reduce carbon emission all at once, yeah, I, I would support, I would support free public transit in this area. Transportation is a basic need and a public good, in my opinion. And then as for the, the vision for Columbia Transit in the future, there was a transportation citizen topic group, and they really firmly suggested in this focus group that the way that we should move forward is expanding the public transit system, identifying and filling in the existing gaps in that system. That might include longer hours of service, more frequent services, and greater coverage for the city. And for many in the city of Columbia, the challenge of breaking the cycle of poverty begins with reliable transportation. Generations of individuals and families seek out jobs to gain financial support by way of accepting a job that they can easily get to each day. Oftentimes, this means accepting a lower-wage job within walking, uh, walking or biking distance of their house, or if they're fortunate enough, along a bus route. Each day, the question of how to get to and from work is present. Whether that is, you know, is there inclement weather? What if the bus is running late? Reliable transportation translates to job security for many, and given the right conditions, can lead to economic mobility. So this is not a scenario that I think is unique to Columbia. It's one that plays out in communities like ours across the country where poverty leads to living in less affluent neighborhoods, which means they don't have access to the resources that they need, which may mean they can't own their own vehicle, or they have to rely on friends, family, walking, or public transportation, which means that they are limited to what jobs they can accept, which means that they are limited to the employers that they have access to, that they can get to each day. And so therefore, you know, they're getting limited income. They're getting caused much more of a greater opportunity cost and further limiting economic mobility for themselves and for generations to come because of transportation. So I think that we have to work harder to expand public transit for communities that rely on it to meet their transportation needs, including putting bus routes near developments and employers. We really need to explore ways to better offer public transportation, to seek out innovative ways to leverage funding sources and multi-sector collaboratives in the name of equity for our community. Having affordable, convenient, and reliable public transportation is what we need to ensure our community can get back to work, back to school, and back to supporting our local businesses, especially right now.
All right, question number five.
This is a two-and-a-half-minute question. Food production, processing, distribution, and preparation, as well as food waste, all have significant climate footprints. Many variables are in play regarding our food footprint, including where and how food is produced, as well as dietary choices. The Climate Action and Adaptation Plan addresses local food production and reducing food waste in the Health, Safety, and Well-Being section, as well as briefly in the Natural Resources Appendix. Do you think the city should be taking action in this area to promote local food and/or to address any other aspects of the climate impact of how we feed ourselves? Are there specific policies or actions you'd like to see pursued? And would you support continued or increased funding of the agriculture park as a way to promote local food production?
Phillip, you're up first.
There's kind of a lot wrapped in here all at once. Regarding the, the carbon food, the carbon footprint of our food production, Missouri is an agri-state. There's no other way to say that. We have an enormous amount of food production here in our state. And beef is a big part of that. Not only is that an enormous number of jobs and families impacted by that, but there's an enormous potential for, for harm to that industry and to those families. If we deviate too much from a working model. Now, there's a lot of other costs. We have a lot of companies in town that are working on synthetic food products, things like plant-based meats. And there's an entire company here in town that does most exclusively that. But it's, it's fallacious thinking to assume that if we move from, for example, grazing beef to producing entirely plant-based beef, that it saves us that carbon footprint. In reality, it's significantly worse in the other direction. The carbon footprint of, of farming is lower than the carbon footprint of plant-based food production because of the amount of chemicals and, and electricity consumed in that process. So it's actually a step backwards significantly. Not to mention the fact that it's not being adopted very widely by the, by the consumption public. There's an enormous amount of, of risk associated with moving away from the industry that supports our, really our entire state. Are there specific pieces of legislation I would like to see regarding growth in that, in, in the attempt to reduce that footprint? Yes, there absolutely are. I would like to see a couple of changes there. I think we could incentivize the reduction of waste, of food waste specifically, if we offered perhaps tax breaks to companies that were able to capture some of that food waste. And by food waste, I don't mean actual garbage. I mean, there, there's an enormous amount of unused food at the end of the day that a lot of restaurants and bakeries and places use that we could capture and provide for some of our, our food banks and other places that that could go to in a much more responsible way. And if we found a way to incentivize those, those food producers here in town to recycle, for lack of a better word, some of that un-eaten food at the end of the day, a tax break is more than reasonable for them, and we can do that without mandating anything. We can just rely on, on people to, to want what's best for that business in the long run. I think that's going to be our, our clearest and most damage-free path forward. And I think that there's a lot of potential for us to even discover better ways once we get involved with that. Once we start reaching out to those members of the community that have their, you know, their fingerprint right on that with that food production, we'll be able to hear more from them about how they're able to do better without regulation.
Betsy, you're up.
Well, I guess I look at promoting local food, um, not just as vegetables and fruits, but also the meats that are fish that a lot of people like to eat. I think anything that allows us to produce food more locally is good. Having been out to the agricultural park and more specifically to the Saturday morning market, you know, there's a lot of local food that's produced, and I think it's pretty exciting to be able to go to that market and see all of the local farmers that come and, you know, have, have food to sell. So I don't see this as an if or if we can have, you know, more local, I would say, I'm not sure what the rules are, but within 20 miles or so of Columbia, or maybe 40, I don't know what it is. I consider that local food, and I think we could, we can, need to continue to support that. I think the agricultural park is a very exciting thing because it allows us to educate students and adults on growing food, local food, and, you know, gives them, also gives us a place to get that food. I think the local community gardens are another exciting way to do that. And so I'd like to continue to support that, the ability of people to grow their own food, but also then to more locally use food as opposed to having it come from, you know, a, a long distance.
Andrea.
As a strategy to reduce emissions associated with the food system, I think that supporting and pursuing an increase of local food production is a smart idea. The city should support organizations promoting community gardens, whether that be for funding partnerships or other educational programming. The city can work to review ordinances and development practices to promote urban farming and entrepreneurship programs for commercial urban farming. I believe that these values are well-aligned with supporting the agricultural park as a way to encourage and promote local food production.
And Bill.
The answer to the question is yes. Growing and transporting food accounts for 19% of greenhouse gases. Raising animals for food is a major contributor of greenhouse gas emissions. The main culprit is methane. Animal emissions, pooping, burping, and farting amount to about 4% of the world's emissions. Rich countries, rich country animals produce lower emissions. You primarily do better food and care. Plant-based meat costs 86% more. Lab-based meat will be available in the mid-20s. We need to waste less food. 40% is somewhere in the United States. Oil is cheaper than soda, $2.25 a gallon versus $1 a gallon. Governments should be coming up with policies and strategies to help farmers reduce emissions while growing more food at the same time. Rich and middle-income people are causing the vast majority of climate change. The poorest people are doing less than anyone else, cause the problem, but they stand to suffer the most from it. They deserve, they deserve the most help. As far as agriculture park goes, it's a great way to promote the local food production. Agriculture park is also a great way to educate the consumer to make informed decisions about what they eat.
Right, ready for the next question? It's on solid waste. Two minutes, two minutes and 30 seconds. City has recently implemented a new pay-as-you-drown trash collection system with the goal of encouraging recycling, composting, and waste minimization while assigning costs more fairly. What are your thoughts on the new pay-as-you-drown system? Do you support its goals? Would you like to see continued use of this system as it is? Would you like to tweak it? And if so, how? Or would you like to replace it with an entirely different system? And that, that's part A. Part B, many are advocating switching to a roll cart system. Would you favor this or oppose it? Roll carts can be an effective pay-as-you-drown system if residents are given a choice of small, medium, or large carts, and if there are significant differences in the pricing. If you favor roll carts, would you support significant price differentials to incentivize waste reduction? And this is again, two minutes and 30 seconds.
Betsy, you're first.
Thank you. Well, as my thoughts on the new pay-as-you-drown system is that it's really new. And it has certainly had some bugs. I like the system as a, as, I mean, I like the system. I think it'll work once the bugs are ironed out of it. So once we saw people that don't have their vouchers, because it turns out they weren't on the list of people to get vouchers. We've, we've certainly had some glitches to the system, so I'd like to give it another couple of months before I'd even consider tweaking the system. Because I'd sort of like to see how the system works the way it was planned to work. I would be fine with moving to a roll cart system that really is dependent upon the citizens of Columbia. You know, in 2016, they voted not to go to roll carts, or they didn't want us to be able to discuss roll carts. You know, there is currently another initiative petition to bring that back to the voters. If they vote for a roll cart system, I would be happy with that. I think it is, I think it would keep us from having the scattered trash that we have. The idea of having small, medium, and large roll carts does make it much easier to contain your trash. And you can have different prices for different roll carts, giving us a different type of pay-as-you-drown system. We wouldn't be double-bagging our plastic for a lot of people that use the 13-gallon, you know, kitchen trash bags. They then have to take those and put them in the larger bag, so it would be nice to have less plastic. And I think we need to acknowledge that this isn't going to work for everyone. For people that, you know, are on steep driveways and are wheelchair-bound or have mobility issues or are, have whatever reason that they can't get a roll cart out to the curb, we need to address that, but it would be nice to at least be able to talk about this. And I would say that we shouldn't be able to, or at least the city government, should be able to address those because of 80 to 90% of the people can successfully use roll carts. Then the other 10%, you know, we can work with. If that means that the trash guys have to go up and get the roll cart and roll it down and empty it and roll it back, that's certainly better for them than probably the, the old bag system and perhaps the new bag system. So I would be agreeable to looking at that. Thanks for the question.
Andrea, you're up, thanks.
So with regards to this question, there are three goals that I think of. I support the goals of reducing waste in our community, a goal of having an equitable utility system, and a goal of protecting the safety of our city employees. We haven't truly begun the pay-as-you-drown throw program to be able to evaluate it as a successful solution. I think that every program is rough at the launch, and this solution incentivizes less waste while reducing risk to our solid waste employees. We should give it a chance to work while exploring other and better options. It's crucial that we're able to revisit any and all solutions to evaluate whether they work or not and whether they are furthering their goals for the city. The voters of Columbia have spoken once on this issue, and it's not the role of city council to overturn that decision. It sets a dangerous precedent. I would support an initiative that was brought forth and is representative of the will of Columbia voters. And if that means implementing a roll cart plan, then that's absolutely how we should proceed. It's clear that the way that we've always done it isn't working, and we should pursue solutions that work to benefit both our residents and our staff, as well as working to achieve the aggressive climate goals we've set forth for our community.
All right, Bill.
The president says some problems. There's interior bags, trash is being left with the residents on the curb. Residential trash is ending up in commercial dumpsters. There's a considerable amount of trash along the sides of our streets. I wouldn't tweak the system instead of carry out and see where it goes. I wouldn't replace it either. Roll carts should be put on the ballot for vote of the people. Stop picking up curbside, which likely due to a staffing problem, was really a management problem.
And Phillip, next.
Sorry, there's a couple of different questions here. I'll try and get to them all in order. The current pay-as-you-drown system is just, it's immediately apparent on its face that it doesn't work. We need to abandon this as quickly as possible. I don't think we need to try and, you know, apologize for it any further. I don't think we need to try and see where it goes. The people of Columbia are unhappy with it. I have my inbox, my, my phone's email, and my Facebook have been on fire for the last couple of weeks. Prior to this, before its rollout, we were already discussing the roll cart system. And immediately, once the system rolled out, it was just instantly apparent it was not going to work. And we need to try and, and recover from this as quickly as possible before it, you know, erupts into something worse. There's an enormous amount of uncaptured trash now that's blowing around because of this. That's not something that's going to be easy to clean up and recover from. Would I tweak it? No, I just want it gone. Would I replace it with a different system? Yes, we discussed this in several other, our other forums as well. Privatization is the surest way to relieve the city of this burden that it clearly can't handle. There are several private recycling and solid waste companies that, that can meet this burden very well with a lower footprint, lower cost to the citizens. Whether that means we end up with some kind of voucher system to recover the tax money we collect for this and then allow them to use that money to purchase the private services. It's not ideal, but it could work. Or if we just incentivize these companies to do so on, on a budget, however we want to make that happen, privatization is definitely the way to go here, and many of our near neighbors in other communities have already moved to that direction. Regarding the variation in the roll carts, it's a better alternative. Do I think it's the perfect solution? No. Do I think it's preferable to where we're at now? Yes. And that's just how democracy works. If it was something people voted against, you know, five years ago, great. Now they want to vote for it. That's how it goes. We don't get to say, well, nope, you would have known then. It's no forever. That's not how the system works. That's not how it should work, and we should let it be revised and let the people have their way right now. I still think it's a second-best option. The best-case scenario is privatized. That way, everybody gets their way. As, as Betsy pointed out earlier, there isn't a one-size-fits-all solution. We're not going to find a solution that works for everybody. There will always be individuals that are, for one reason or other, not going to be satisfied with, with an offering. And whether that's because they're, they're handy accessible, or they have other disabilities that prevent them from being able to roll their carts out, or it's because they don't like the roll carts, they don't like the way they look or what they cost. We can have this privatized in such a way that individuals can contract with whatever company best meets their need. And there are private companies that do offer front-door pickup so that it relieves the individuals of the need to take it to the curb and put themselves in harm.
Okay, question number seven.
You have a minute and a half for this one. Retrofitting municipal buildings for heating with ground-source heat pumps is more expensive than including the heat pumps in the initial construction, but will save the city government money in the long run and will help reduce money in the long run and will help reduce greenhouse gas production in Columbia. Do you support selling bonds to fund this type of retrofit?
Andrea, you're first.
I think in order to reach the zero emissions goal, we have to implement long term solutions. Cleaner systems within city owned buildings is definitely one of these options, and I support that. We should explore all the available funding options, but to be cautious about putting our city's future at risk by weakening weakening its financial stability. I support looking into selling bonds as an option, but also would want to see what other funding sources are available and realistic.
All right, Bill, yeah.
The answer I gave to this question was no. I need more information. Estimated cost of the project and what the payback time is. The answer for when he comes to the billions, no.
Philip, you're.
I'm with Bill on this. I think the the simplest answer is no. Selling bonds is a very risky, risky step for your city, especially considering that we're already in a volatile state economically. While I am in favor of trying to be responsible and ethical with our environment, that has to be second to human life. And unfortunately, economic distress has already resulted in the loss of human life on a scale we haven't really fully come to grips with yet. And the last thing we need is to further irritate our 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 citizens by putting extra undue stress on them in this way. The last thing we want to do is cause more damage in our, as we attempt to do good. Damaging our economy in this way is not only going to hurt our trust with our citizens and prevent us from doing other things down the road that might be beneficial to the environment. But this doesn't even necessarily provide a clean step forward in that direction. That's that's worth that particular cost. Are there other ways we might look at funding? Possibly. As the question's ringed right now regarding the bonds, it's hard enough.
Betsy, you're.
Well, I sort of liked Andrea's answer, actually. But I'm not quite as good at that as she is. I would support looking into it. I'd like to know how many buildings need to be retrofitted, what the cost would be and the timeframe to do that. You know, what the life expectancy of the building is before we go to any expense of retrofitting. But you know, I think we should look into it, how much, how much it would save and or how much is expected to save in the decreased greenhouse gases. So I'd be willing to look into it. I need to see, you know, more data, I guess.
Alrighty, well, that was our last question for this forum, and I want to thank all the candidates who are able to make it tonight. So Carolyn has recorded this and it's also live on Facebook. So if you want to go, you can go to the Sierra Club Osage Group page and it'll be live on there and you can always share it after the the live recording is over. And then we will also send out the live recording as soon as it's available. So I just wanted to thank you all again. Really appreciate it and have a good night.
Thank you.